I'd like to call, call to order the regular meeting for Thursday, June 21st, 2018. I want to remind everyone to silence your phones, electronic devices. If you have any blue slips to speak on an item, please have them up to either Mr. Bowles or Ms. Jennifer prior to the item coming up. Jessica. Find Jennifer, give her one too. Again, prior to the items coming up. All right, we have invocation and pledge of allegiance, Ms. Mayo.
Our heavenly Father, thank you for watching over us each day. I ask that you be above us for blessings, below us for support, before us for guidance, behind us for protection, beside us for comfort. Help us to keep you at the forefront of our minds as we do the work set before us. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Face the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, sir. Mr. Abshire?
Here.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Here.
Mr. Brain?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Fornum?
Here.
Mr. Gidry is out of town this evening on parish business. Mr. Gilery?
President.
Mr. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Latour?
Here.
Ms. Mayo?
Here.
Mr. McMillan?
Here.
Mr. Scott?
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie was unable to attend this evening. Vice President White?
Here.
And President Bayers.
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
Make sure everybody's got their, everybody situated, huh? Item number four, we will return to at 6:00 PM to hold a public hearing. Item number five, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have five applications before you tonight and we recommend they be approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Latour, a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. Item six, consideration of approving payment of all current invoices and advise regarding monthly budget to actual comparisons. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont, a second by Mr. Gilery. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. Item seven, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated May 24th, 2018. Got a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion, any objection, motion carries. Item eight, take appropriate action on a request by TSWS Environmental Properties LLC to rezone from agricultural to light industrial to allow industrial development to storage yard at 823 Harvest Drive in Ward Four. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I have a motion to uphold by Mr. Fornum and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. Item nine, take appropriate action on a request by Glenn Fugilay Educks to rezone from agricultural to recreational vehicle park-
Move to uphold, plan and zone with state.
To allow a recreational vehicle park, thirty-two spaces at 2120 Puhoe Road in Ward Three. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I've got a motion to uphold by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. Item ten, take appropriate action on a request by Robert Miller to amend the ordinance number 6669, stipulation number one, to allow a revised site plan, five manufactured home spaces total, at 623 and 629 I-10 Mobile Village Road in Ward Eight. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I've got a motion to uphold by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo. We do have discussion. Mr. Landry?
I just got a question. So there's only going to be two mobile homes there? That's it?
No, there's several.
So it's already, it's already a part?
Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Take appropriate, item eleven, take appropriate action on a request by Electronics Workshop LLC to rezone from single-family residential to mixed residential to allow residential development duplex in the 400 block of Park Road in Ward One. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I've got a motion to uphold by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Mr. Landry?
I had a question. Isn't this the same piece that came a year ago that was wanting to put a repair shop there?
Yes, sir.
So I guess it's been a year ago evidently.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And they, they found another location.
It was unanimous, so I guess that's good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Landry.
While I got the floor, I do have a request from you, Mr. President. What are we on a level? Would you take, what was that?
You want me to set your watch so you know when to-
Well, no, I'm gonna tell you, I've already complained about that. That clock is two minutes fast.
Okay.
They're going to fix it. I want you to take number thirteen next, ahead of number twelve, because it's only gonna, it'll be very brief. And number twelve, we're probably gonna be here for a while, to keep those folks from waiting.
Uh, we will skip to number thirteen.
Mr. President, we still haven't taken action on eleven yet.
Okey-dokey. Any further discussion on twelve, eleven? Any objection, item carries. Item thirteen, take appropriate action on a request by Nine Oaks LLC to rezone from single-family residential to multifamily residential to allow residential development to-
Move to defer for thirty days.
-twenty-four duplexes and eight fourplexes at 851 East Tank Farm Road in Ward Three. Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, and voted two for and six against to recommend that the request be denied. Should the police jury grant the request, the planning and director recommends conditions. Got a motion by Mr. Landry to defer for thirty days and a second by Mr. McMillan. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. Item fourteen, take appropriate action on, we're gonna go back to twelve, so you just won't, you just want to-
Just the one yet. I mean, but you're running the meeting, if you want to come do twelve last, you can.
If I could, if I could make a suggestion that we take fourteen and fifteen ahead of twelve, that would probably help a lot of folks.
That's the only other two zones in the case this time.
All right, we will skip ahead to fourteen. Take appropriate action on a request by Great Southern Group LLC et al. to rezone from light commercial to light industrial-
Move to uphold, plan and zoning.
-to allow industrial development contractor shop and storage yard at 3227 South Begless Parkway in Ward Four. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with conditions. I have a motion to uphold, Mr., by Mr. Fornum, and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion, any objection, item carries. I'm gonna go back to twelve. Item twelve, take appropriate action on a request to rezone from agricultural, general commercial, and unzone to central business commercials and light industrial to allow commercial and light industrial development, light industrial mega site on Highway 90 West, Fobacher Road, Interstate 10 West, Highway 108 West, and Gum Island Road in Ward Seven. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June 19th, 2018, and voted six for and two against to recommend that the request be granted with conditions.
Move to uphold, zoning and planning.
Okay, we've got a motion-
Second.
-to uphold, a second by, by Mr. McMillan, a second by Mr. Landry, and we have a motion to discuss by Mr. Scott. Any discussion, any discussion?
We have discussion anyhow.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
Mr. President, I know there will be discussion from the jurors, should we hear from the applicant and the opponents first?
Yes. So, we'd like to invite the applicant-
You're gonna discuss it. Let's go, applicant.
Okay, thank you. State your name, sir, and address for the record.
I'm Mark McMurray. Address is 1011 Lakeshore Drive, Suite 522, Lake Charles, 70601. Mr. President and members of the jury, I thank you for the opportunity to, to have a hearing before you today on behalf of the property owners that are, are the petitioners for this site. I'm sure that you've had ample opportunity to look over the file that has been given to you by planning and, and the staff here. So rather than bore you with some of that all over again, I'm sure there'll be opportunity for any questions on that to come up. What I'd like to do is to spend a few moments with you to talk a little bit about our intention here. I think sometimes that gets lost in the shuffle when we're talking about maps and all the other things that go along with this, conditions and everything else. There'll be opportunity for us to try to answer those questions, but it, I've heard it said that the best way to predict the future is to create it. For many, many years, that's what's happened in Calcasieu Parish. First, those folks had decided that it was a good thing to have a ship channel, predicted the future and created it. Years later, the police jury in the 1960s set forth some industrial areas that are still in place today. That was before zoning ever happened. They set areas in the parish where heavy industrial development could take place and thereby saying to everyone in Calcasieu Parish, if heavy industrial is gonna take place, this is where it's gonna be. So everyone knew. Eighties come along and the governing bodies here got together and did what was necessary to secure Chenault, the Chenault Airport, back from the federal government, which had had it ever since Chenault Air Base had closed back in the early 60s. They got together to do that and since that time, there's been one form or fashion of aircraft maintenance that's taken place out there. They predicted the future and they created it for that. Nineties come along and while we didn't have a whole lot of say in it, the public in Calcasieu Parish voted to allow for gaming to take place. And I don't need to tell any of y'all what impact that's had on the parish from, from a financial point of view and, and the state as well. I think what the petitioners in this case are trying to do is that same kind of thing. If there's been a deficit of some kind of opportunity for development in Calcasieu Parish, it's been in the light industrial area. We've got a lot of industry here, you can look everywhere and see it. But we don't have a collective place where significant light industrial development can take place in Calcasieu Parish. There, if, if, if there was a dictionary entry for what a mega site location would be, it would have a picture of this site. That's how perfect this site is with state highways on the north and south, with an interstate highway running right down the middle of it and a parish road that, that intersects that in the middle of the property. The fact that it's primarily two landowners that have this property is almost unheard of. Some of the mega sites that have formed in the south have had to accumulate a hundred property owners to try to put something together like this. So if, if Calcasieu Parish was ever gonna have a mega site, this is where it would I want to say thanks to Wes and Brian and the staff here for their willingness to think outside the box, because it took a little of that for us to be here tonight. Zoning ordinance was passed, what, thirty-five years ago, close to forty years ago? There wasn't mega sites forty years ago. You don't have a entry in your ordinance that's for mega sites. So it took thinking outside the box to have the opportunity for us to even be able to make this presentation, and we appreciate that. That's, that's not small, that's big. There's been some issues related to this that some folks were, maybe feeling like the best thing for this land would be to stay like it is. Not a way to create the future. We want to be good neighbors to everybody around us. We want to be able to provide something that goes well beyond the confines of this property and, and goes all across this region in terms of job creation, good job creation, in a clean environment. There is nothing, I couldn't say anything disparaging about the heavy industrial we have here, because it has created opportunities for all of our families and our children and, and the money that you guys have for roads and everything else that, that you have responsibility for. But to be able to put together something that would allow us an opportunity to compete in the future for an automotive assembly plant, for a Amazon distribution center or a Walmart distribution center, the packet that we handed out has some pictures in there of similar type facilities, what they look like. There's also some pictures in there of mega sites that have been formed on the Gulf Coast that look just like this property looks today, because th, th, this is not an instant thing. I would say, I would suggest to you that it kind of falls under the confines of that old adage that says that, you know, you, you plant oak trees, the shade of which you never sit under. And that's sometimes what we have to do when we think ahead. And I think that's what we're trying to do here. Now, having said all of that, if it's possible to put up on the screen the, the zoning, yes, that zoning map, I'd like to, I'd like to talk to you about something. How much time do I have? There's a piece here that we've had in this plan, still in the plan, and there are reasons for it being there, and I want to explain those, and then I want to tell you what I think we'd like to do. This little, well, the pointer doesn't work on the screen. Well, Guy, if you were taller, you'd get up there and point to that. That, no, up, above that, no, over there, there you go, right there. Okay, good, thank you. That's the one piece of this thing that is not contiguous to everything else. Now, why would we do that? When you're talking about ten or 12,000 acres, why would we, why would we do that? Well, the reason that's there is because of what's right above it, rail access. There's very few mega sites that we've been able to find that have been successful without rail access. So rail access is extremely important to this, to this mega site, having an opportunity to compete favorably for those kinds of things that I just mentioned a while ago. We have two of those. You can see down, from rail access, a little white thing, there's another line going down to that right there. We don't know what an engineering firm would say would be the best place to put rail access. I think we can assume we don't need two, okay? But we also recognize that there are issues related to wetlands or other things that could be a problem for the one to the west. So we wanted that site up there, owned by one of the owners that, that are the petitioners, the Drew Estate. We wanted to ha, to have that in this plan so that we would have the opportunity to have a spur, a rail spur off of the, the line, the rail there, to come down into our site, because that's gonna be crucial to have rail to this site. That tract is not big enough to handle a full spur. So if that site would be zoned as part of this plan tonight, we would still, at some point in the future, and, and understand, we don't go out and build this rail after this zoning, that's a very expensive proposition, plus you're dealing with the railroads that has their own clock. They decide on, on their own time how they're gonna do things. But we would need additional property around that little site that we would have to either come back to you and ask for a rezoning for some of that to allow rail, because Wes tells me that it's not available on A1 property, okay? So we would need to do one of two things. Come back here and ask you to rezone that like, like we're asking tonight, or go to the Planning and Zoning Commission and ask them to give us an exception, which you don't act on, if I'm, if I understand it right. So, so one way or the other, to allow for rail to get to this site if we need it at that point, if that's where the, the spur needs to come from, we gotta go back through a process anyway. That being the case, we feel like that it would, it's prudent for us to ask someone on the jury, if this is the proper way to do that, to consider a motion that would call for an amendment to our request tonight, to reduce our request by that site and that that site not be part of our request for zoning.
I would like to make that motion.
We've tried to make this whole process a process of good faith, and we feel like this is, this, this is an extension of that by, by making this offer tonight. I, I hope that's the way it's perceived and, but what I would like to ask you, just collectively, and I think this is probably rhetorical, because I don't know that, I don't know that any of you are gonna answer this right now, but I would like to at least put this out there, that if we need that site in the future to make what you are being asked to zone tonight ultimately happen, I'd just like each of you to think about anything that would keep you from allowing that to happen one way or the other, either by rezoning that tract and enough around it to get a spur, or being supportive of a request from us to the planning board to grant an exception to us to allow that to happen. There's been some talk about how, well, this whole thing is being put together and slammed together in a short amount of time. We've been working on this a very long time. A lot of study and research has gone into mega sites by our team. But by giving that up tonight, what we're trying to say is, we might have to come back to you, and we'd like to think that by doing the zoning tonight, you're really wanting a mega site to work. And if it takes that to work, I'd just like to say, we might be back here at some point. It may be five years. We certainly don't want to hurry to put a rail in until we know there's a good reason to do that. We're hoping that there's gonna be that good reason to do that, and we think that there will, but it might take a while. It does take a while for this kind of thing to develop. There are mega sites that have been mega sites for five years and don't have anything on it.
Mr. McMurray, you're head of the team, so just whenever you can complete it.
Well, look, I, I think I've said enough. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions that you have, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to be here to represent the landowners on this project. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Let's sit tight right there, a couple jurors have some questions. Mr. Latour?
Mr. McMurray, I see the, the pictures and everything that you've brought up. Do you have any conceptual drawings of what the site could possibly look like, or anything of that nature? I mean, I see maps and I see stuff in Kentucky, but that's the number one question I've been getting from, I mean, it's not my district, and excuse me for speaking out, but a lot of emails, a lot of calls about, you know, from the contractors and different people, developers throughout the community that, you know, when they try to turn something in, trying to get something rezoned, which you know, you've been in the shoes for a long time, that they have to have some kind of conceptual drawings, something to show the public on what they're doing, what the intent is, anything that could help out with the-
Mr. Latour, that's kind of what I meant when I said it took the staff thinking outside the box here. It's, it, most of the mega sites that have been developed were not developed that way because their whole intent is to put enough acreages together to be able to compete for things that right now they don't know are gonna happen there. We, we don't, I know that it's this body's general desire, as well as the planning commission's desire, to not zone a piece of property until you know exactly what's gonna go there. If that's the standard that we set, Calcasieu Parish will never have a mega site. So it, we couldn't do that. We don't want to preempt the possibility of things that can happen here and would say, we want this site right here, next to Interstate 10. Our goal here is to have, to land a home run that's gonna want an interchange on I-10 at Fobacher Road, because these, most of these mega sites are gonna, they're centered around interstate highways, and for us to be able to have an interstate going down the middle and a state, a state highway on the north and south, it's just, it, it's a perfect configuration for that. So I understand those, we get that, that complaint, and I, I can share it and I understand why that is a complaint. It just won't work like this. Now, having said that, we know there are various sites on this that probably will end up becoming natural buffers for whatever's put there because of wetlands or floodway or whatever else. That's a good thing, you know, we don't want wall-to-wall concrete out there. But, so, you know, there is a point that we feel like that once we get into the certification process with the state, that may be the biggest reason why it's hard to, to put together and say, this is where this is gonna be and this is our plan for this, is that to make this competitive with other sites across the Gulf Coast and East Coast, we gotta get some of this property certified by the state, because a lot of the RFPs that take place are sent to state economic development departments. For them to respond to say, yeah, we have a site that can, that can do that, and they, they help promote that site. So we want to get some of this certified. But to preempt that process where the state with all of their expertise would be able to say, we think this area right here is what we've seen from the automotive plants and the distribution centers, this is the area right here where they're gonna want to be, then we didn't want to preempt that. We want to be, have a, have a free rein to be able to work with them to put together just what you're asking for. And I think that's gonna be a, that's gonna, the culmination of this is gonna be just that kind of a plan. But we need their expertise as part of the process, and they're not gonna give us that until it's zoned. They've been burned.
Right. Yes, I did a little research on LED, which, I mean, I think that, I know that you've done a lot of work and a lot of, you know, the buffer zones and everything. The only thing is that I was just worried about is a setting of precedents with other developers who's gonna come in and, well, I'm gonna get a state- with other developers who's going to come in and, "Well, I'm going to get it state, state certified," and, you know, "Well, I just want a, a blank, a blank area to write off of." And which, I mean, I was just conceptual drawing something where you could have put 200-acre lots, it could have been 50, 10, where you could have suited any size development or anything, just for the people who live around there to know what they were looking at. But I do appreciate your time, and thank y'all for all the hard work y'all have done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Latour. Mr. Farnum.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, thank y'all for, for bringing this to the table tonight. I know this was a heavy, heavy concern for the people along Ladue Road. Thank, thank the landowners for, for bringing this offer to the table. I really appreciate that. I, I get what's going on here, and I know that the challenges that you're faced with, with, with a mega site. And when, when something doesn't fit in the box, you have to, you have to think outside the box. And, and this is going to force us as a body to think about how to make an ordinance that, that fits this. There's a lot of things that come along that we're faced with on a pretty regular basis that don't quite fit, so it makes us have to figure out a way to make it fit. And Wes and them do a pretty good job of trying to fit all this stuff in a bucket. Sometimes it's just real difficult to do. So again, thank y'all for what y'all brought to the table on that, on that one side. I know it's going to mean a lot. And a question to Wes.
Yes, sir.
Do you even need a zoning to put a rail in? Because once, once you donate property to the railroad, it kind of becomes like a, another country in some aspects. We, we have no say-so over what happens inside that rail right away. So do you even need a zoning to do that? Or do you determine a route and, and make a route, and then the railroad takes it over and, and it's done?
Yeah, I think some of that's been questioned in the past, but in, in the ordinance, as it stands right now, railroads are defined under the ordinance in where they're to be located, what processes you have to go through. So in A1 agricultural, it does require an exception by the board in order to establish rail.
Mr. President, could I respond to that as well?
Yes, sir.
One of the differences here...
Actually, we have to go back at six o'clock right now.
Hold that thought.
Okay.
Have to go back. Item number four. Hold a public hearing at 6:00 PM. Ordering, as a notice, as a result of notice provided to the owner of the property described below in accordance with Article 2 of Chapter 6 of the Code of Ordinances of the parish of Calhoun, Louisiana, ordering said owner to show cause as to why the structure on said property should not be condemned. 1065 Armintor Road, Carlos area, Ward 4. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, my office has been in contact with the owners of this property, and, and they've actually submitted to us a list of repairs that they would like to have done on this particular trailer. And we're okay with them moving forward with that. We think that 60 days is adequate enough time for them to get this done. In fact, they've indicated that that's probably enough time for them to get this done. So I'm not sure if the owner is here tonight or the person who may be helping to do that, but...
Is this person here tonight?
Yes, sir. I'm Dean Belshi.
Ah, hang on.
No, no, no. Come on. Have we already condemned, I forgot what happened. Have we condemned the property?
I'm sorry. What was the question?
Have we already condemned the property last time?
No, you, you asked for a defer.
We just deferred. That's it.
Yeah, you deferred. And, and basically, Mr. Belshi has, is a friend of the person that's doing this, and I think he's volunteered to help, help her
That's correct.
get this taken care of. So we're, we're okay.
Okay, for your, for the record, your name and address, please.
Dean Belshi, 409 Carlos Drive, software 70665.
Any discussion?
I mean, I would make a motion to, to give them the 60 days.
Second that motion.
Yes, sir.
If the gentleman agrees, it can be done in 60 days?
Yes, sir. That was our, that was our timeframe for the plan.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Farnum to...
Mr. President.
Mr. Scott.
It, it is a public hearing, so we do actually have to see if there's anybody else who wants to speak on this topic before we take action.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this topic? Well, there's no blue slip, so...
It's a public hearing, it's, so you have to ask.
Mr. Scott.
You know, Mr. Crane, on that list of things that, is there mold remediation in that? Because when we looked at those pictures, and if they wanted to pull them up again today, that was one of the main concerns, that they were talking about renting this property and all of that. That thing had so much mold in it and pictures. I didn't even go on out there and looking at it. Is that specifically stated they're going to take care of that? Are they about to cover it all up and rent it?
No, sir. They don't have specifically indicated on here about mold remediation. However, they do have indication that they would take out some of the paneling and siding to, and replace that. So it may expose that, so they can, you know, clean some of that up.
As, as we get into the repair process, I am familiar, I, I don't, I'm not licensed or anything in the mold removal, but I have the capabilities that the company I work for, we, we have the access to the equipment and the chemicals to use for treating with.
Is that something y'all would go inspect once they open up the walls, or no? Because it's hued, you really, no, you can't?
We can, we can go out there and, and do periodical, periodic inspections on this as they're moving through the process, and we can report on that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any further discussion?
I'd make that as part of my motion to include that. That's your office. Go out there and just check.
Do, do periodic inspections. We'll set up a schedule. And once they come in and get the permit, we can schedule at, at what time, you know, we'll need to go out there during that process.
You'd be able to sleep tonight, Mr. Scott, if we do that?
I like to smell mold everywhere, so I don't get sleeping on it. But yes, I would.
Include that in my second as well. All right, so we have a motion with stipulations. Mr. Landry, a second by Mr. Farnum. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Take it off, pause, and come back to item 12.
Hey, Mr. President, as we do go back to item 12, I know there's been a primary motion and now a motion to amend. Just to make Ms. Kathy's job a little easier, if we can take care of the motion to amend the main motion right now, as Mr. McMurray walks back up, that'd probably be the way to go.
So we have a motion by Mr., Mr. White to amend the...
The main motion.
The main motion.
And, and I can read it if, and Mr. White can correct me from wrong, but I've got a motion to amend the main motion to remove from this zoning request the northern non-contiguous or the isolated portion of property designated as rail access.
Thank you.
We don't have a legal description, but that's probably sufficient right now.
Thank you, sir. And we have a second by Mr. Farnum. Any discussion on that? Roll call, Mr. President. Matter of record. Roll call, Ms. Kathy, please.
Mr. Ebscher?
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pont?
Yes.
Mr. Brane?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Farnum?
Yes.
Mr. Gillery?
Yes.
Mr. Landry?
Yes.
Mr. Latour?
Yes.
Ms. Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Is unanimous?
Thank you, Ms. Kathy.
You're welcome.
So is Mr. McMurray finished? Okay. Mr. McMurray, your question...
In the interest of full disclosure, I got to tell you, I had to ask Jennifer what, what I was, what the issue was. Kind of goes with the, this territory of life I'm in right now. I can remember what the police jury did 35 years ago, but I can't remember what I had for lunch yesterday. The point I was going to make, Les, is that this would be a private spur. So it, it's not, obviously, the railroad's got to be involved to allow that to happen on their line. But, but what happens after it leaves their line is on private, so I think that's why Wes is...
It wouldn't be a line controlled by the railroad.
That's correct.
And you'd probably get a lot, done a lot quicker than that.
Well, it, it's just getting the approval in the first place is the hard part.
I get it. Mr. Brane?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, I wanted to ask you this before we voted on the amendment, but... So the piece that, I don't have the map up anymore, but the piece that, that we just took out, that is crucial to making the whole rail hub work, right?
Maybe. If, if the site to the west of that would be the preferred site, and that can work from an engineering perspective, then this one is less important. If the one on the other side doesn't work, then that site and sites around that site that we don't own
Got you.
will be very important.
Okay. I, I thought, the way you explained it, that you had to have both of them.
No.
Okay.
We don't think so, do we?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Landry? Oh, excuse me, Mr. McMillan, sorry.
Thank you. Mark, I appreciate you being here, talking about this subject tonight. It could be a generational type effect here in southwest Louisiana. But let's look at, and I want to ask you kind of, with your expertise through the years, and speak on behalf of the people of that area, their number-one investment, their homes, and the buffer zones, how can we protect these people's investments? First, I'll probably ask you, and then I ask Wes on some development agreement-type questions, too. I want to know, I want to get a, a good feeling of these people's homes are not going to be devalued. Can you, can you comment on that?
Well, from a valuation point of view, I think it might be quite the opposite if we're able to pull off here what we want to have happen here. Actually, the value could actually go up, maybe not in their minds, because that's where they want to be. And I, and I understand, we, we get that. We all own homes and, and, you know, that's the largest investment any of us make in a lifetime. And to the extent that someone feels threatened by that, that's a pretty emotional issue, very passionate issue. And so we, we understand that. To that end, that's one of the reasons that we came back after the initial deal and, and decided that we ought to do a 300-foot, instead of a 100-foot buffer zoned I-1, we offered to go with a 300-foot buffer that's kept agricultural. What I would want to address to that question is kind of what I said a little bit earlier about how the police jury in the 60s went and created that industrial area kind of thing. There's not many homes that are adjacent to this site as we speak. There's some. And, you know, to those folks, what, what I want to say, and I think what the owners want to say is we want to do everything we can to not impact your quality of life. And with I-1, we feel like there's a really good shot at doing that. If you look at things that can go in I-1, they're not smokestacks, they're not things that, that have that kind of environment. They're, they're a building like the Igloo facility in Katy, Texas, or there are rooms to go over, right across the interstate from that, those kind of things. But by having all of this zoned now, what we're doing is we're, we're lowering the numbers of folks that if we tried to piecemeal this, might end up developing their homes near this without the knowledge of what could come later. So this is a mechanism of doing what the jury in its wisdom in the 1960s did by setting forth those industrial areas, so people knew that that's what it was reserved for. And so it's a point of being able to not have that kind of issue that you're questioning continue to be multiplied over a period of time because we're able to say all at one time, "That's what this is reserved for." Now, there's going to be a lo, a considerable amount of that area that's not going to have an I-1 building sitting in it because there's some wetlands, there's some other issues there. And hopefully, we're going to be able to use those to really help the looks of this site by the natural buffer that takes place with those kind of things on the property. So I, I don't know if that answers your question, but it's, it was an effort to say, "Look, we understand these people."
A Wes for later. So I'm through. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Crane?
Yes, sir.
Let's say they land one of these deals. That company or whoever, they're going to have to come to you and show you what they're going to put there. At that time, you're going to know.
Oh, yes, sir.
And you're going to have input at that time.
Yes, sir.
It can't go here. I'd rather, I'd really rather go, needs to be here. Of course, we already talked about drainage, all these other things. I'm, I feel good about that, but... So there's going to be input. I know it won't come up here to be rezoned, because that part of it's already done, but there'll still be input from the parish on what's going to happen at that point, once you know what it is.
That's correct. And, and we, we did provide a stipulation in here that, that assured, you know, that when they, when they do land a, a company and, and, you know, perhaps it's a large company, and they're going to have to, you know, they'll, they'll have to provide, you know, detailed site plans, you know, building plans, drainage impact analysis, traffic impact analysis. So there, there are some safeguards there that still give the police jury that review power.
Because you won't issue the permit until you're satisfied.
That's correct. We still have the development permit that we hold until we get all those things in place and reviewed. And it may be other agencies that have to, that we hold the permit before, you know, before we release a permit, that we will have to obtain before they move forward. So I think we have some pretty good safeguards in here. Even though we don't have an initial site plan at this point in time, I think we still have those, those safeguards.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Andrew Pont?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark, by removing the said property, that will kind of alleviate the impact of the citizens that live in that community?
If I understood, some of the concern about that particular site, having the rail thing, there was concern about, I think there might have been some belief that there might be a switchyard there, and that, that's not going to happen. There's a switchyard just to the east of there. They're not going to, the railroads are not going to invest in another switchyard that close to, to that. I think that's even a possibility. So if that property isn't needed ultimately, then I think that would very much alleviate any of the concern from at least the homeowner or homeowners that were in that immediate area that were concerned about rail right there.
Well, I think I speak on behalf of not only myself, but the other jurors. I'd like to thank the landowners for having the vision and the compassion to look at that site and concede that acreage. And my hat goes off to those people. Are you a bag, Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. Mr. Scott?
I wanted to follow up on what Mr. Andrew Pont said. It's, it would only be a spur, not a switchyard.
That's correct.
All right. Now I'm going to go, they always say you should talk about the good things before you get into the hard things. So, you know, they say you can tell what somebody really is and their passion is by where they spend their time and your money. And I know a mega site has definitely taken some time for you and your, your partners to look at and figure out exactly, "Does this work? Will it work?" And I know you're not doing this for free, I wouldn't imagine. So that does take, you know, you've got to spend some money to kind of figure out these kind of things. But there's some hurdles along the way, and if I can talk to you about a couple of them and see where y'all would end up being. The first thing is, we, Texas doesn't have an inventory tax. So when I see a rooms-to-go in an Igloo site, I'm thinking, "That hurdle means tax deductions even bigger or better than what Texas is not putting in place." So how do you get over the inventory tax to try to lure those guys across wet floods and the Interstate 10 shuts down at this point in time, the second hurdle? So just speak to those two right quick.
Well, on the first of those two, Louisiana has a package of incentives that they put out there. It's, you know, taxation, trying to find out, trying to compare one tax to another tax is like trying to grab a greased pig. It doesn't, it's, it's very difficult to get your arms around that because taxes are different. What's the fair tax, or how's that compared to another kind of tax? So the state has been successful competing against other states that have a different tax system than we have. Sometimes you've got to be creative to do that, but there's enterprise zones, there's those kind of things that, that happen. And there's also competition with supply... And there's also competition with supplies and how those things are provided. So, we'd have to, we'd have to think that the state couldn't be successful, and that's not true, because they have been successful in some ways of getting business to locate here. So, on that one, I would say we feel like we can be competitive, even though there's a different tax structure in Texas than there is here. What was the second one?
When I-10 floods.
Okay.
You can't get over the beam.
Well...
What then? How do you get over that hurdle when you're trying to get somebody to...
Yeah, maybe it's a pretty good, maybe it's a pretty good day for us to talk about that, because if you've seen some of the news reports about what's going on in Texas right now, we look better than they do. So, that, yeah, cross your fingers, I understand, but we've had our moments as well, but I don't think that that's... That has varying degrees of influence, because down where we are, we're subject to those. We're subject to hurricanes and those kind of things. But, you know, we've made that work for other things. If you contemplate what was spent at Le Berge and the Golden Nugget, and what's at risk to those folks with what the bridge is going to be happening with the bridge, or with flooding, or whatever else, you already see that people have been willing to make an investment here, even though those things occur sometimes.
So, we get into talking about building the future. So, when we're looking at a mega site right here, and you talk about bringing in all this new business, sitting as a governing body, the first thing I have to start thinking of is, what is it going to cost me infrastructure-wise? And am I planning to date for what you're already planning for, or am I going to wait until you drop something in my lap in a few years? So, how much of this do you think is going to fall on taxpayers to build infrastructure to this site compared to the private industry that tries to locate here?
Best way I can answer that is with the mega sites that have landed these automotive plants and these distribution centers, the payback to them by having that there in terms of taxes paid, jobs created, far exceeds whatever their expenses were to help make that happen. And, you know, y'all had to spend a whole bunch of money to help Le Berge get, I mean, Golden Nugget get the Cove Lane deal. You had to spend a whole bunch of money doing that, but you're getting, you're getting that back. And in the long run, you're going to well exceed whatever your expense was there, so...
Don't forget global.
Huh? Yeah, that's true. Yeah. Global was another example of how you put money into that, from the waterline increase in size to the road, and you got that money back. So, that's the way, that's been the history of these mega sites, when they land one of these automotive plants or distribution centers, which, you know, knock on wood, we'll have an opportunity to do that. We don't have any contact with any of those people right now, because we don't have anything to offer them. But if we're able to land one of those things, with the number of jobs that come with that, and the taxes and things that go along with that, whatever investment you would be asked to make at that point, and I don't have any notion right now what that might be, but I would say that would be a pretty, most of us would take that investment ourselves if we had that kind of a payback.
How small a sites are you willing to break this mega site into? I mean, you can get into one acre. I mean, we're not all of a sudden going to end up with 50,000 driveways a month, about, aren't we?
No. Well, first of all, I don't think Wes would approve that. I don't think Wes and Alan and Tim Connor would be approving that. That certainly isn't our goal. Our goal is to hit a home run, and then allow that home run to allow collection of suppliers around that. That's what's happened in many of these cases, where one of them gets an automotive plant or distribution center, all of a sudden, people want to be around that, supplier, other suppliers want to be around that. But your staff is not going to approve having emptying driveways in there. There'll have to be main access into the, into the site, and then off of that main access, which would be within the site.
Well, that's if you don't break it into a lot of small sites.
Well, that's not our game plan. Now, as much study as we've done on mega sites, I've got to tell you, we're not experts in that. And we're going to seek the advice of experts and engineers that have had that kind of experience with these things as we go forward in doing what Mr. Latour was asking about, and what Wes had explained earlier, that we would get into trying to put some design to the thing that had, that made sense, that wasn't just us pinning the tail on the donkey, but, you know, actually making some common sense about how a mega site works.
Well, I'm on, I'm just, access management, I like to say that word every once in a while, because we don't do that enough in this parish, which they can only approve or not approve according to what our ordinance says. And it's not strong enough when it comes to not ending up with another Lake Street, another Ryan Street. So, Gulf Highway, I hope we protect it before we start developing it. So, just use this platform to talk about access management. And I hope in your development with your engineers, as they begin to do this site, that they look heavily into that.
Just to that point, it would be absolutely counterproductive for us to not do that.
Thank you.
Because the kind of thing we want to have there is not going to want it placed in an area where they can't depend on the professionalism at the way this site will be developed.
How long did, will it take to get this site certified if this zoning passes to not?
Well, first, I would say we probably won't just get one certified site. Now, we will try first to get one. But then, part of this plan, working with the experts, is to figure out where various certified sites can be on this piece of property. It's taken sometimes over a year to get, to get a certification for that. That's a pretty extensive list. I think Wes and Brian can tell you that checklist for certification is not walk-in-the-park. Some pretty extensive questioning that takes place, and things that you have to accommodate or you don't get the certification.
All right. And now that I've said access management, I'm going to say my other favorite word, design standards. I know it's not the big thing that we like to hear in Calhoun Parish, but have y'all entertained the thoughts amongst your group, that you actually set some design standards that can be followed within this site, since we don't have any?
Yeah, it goes to my answer to the earlier question, in that for us to be successful, we're going to have to do that in a way that is not going to scare off or have some, have one of these home runs that we're looking for, say, well, no, we don't want to be at that place, it looks like heck. So, you know, we're going to, that'll be part of the overall plan for this, is to make sure that those, those design standards are in place. I can't imagine that we wouldn't go forward to do that, and I think any firm worth their salt that's in the engineering business that has done mega sites before would say exactly that, that you've got to have that in place.
I guess the last thing I touch on is when you talked to, Mr. McMillan talked about the value, the home values. You know, as you drive and you look at these different sites, whether it's in Dallas, Katy, whatever, you see the layering of, from industrial, commercial, then it gets into multifamily, then it gets into, you know, they still build around them. It doesn't matter which one comes first, and it continues to grow, and it's cleaner than what we, there's less trash on the road with, you know, millions more people than we have here. So, you know, I do believe in looking forward in the future and engaging it. And so, best of luck to y'all, best of luck to Calhoun Parish, and I hope this is something that changes the quality of life, and you end up with a green space park in there, and McMurray Park again, or whatever happens out there, you know? Something to remember you by whenever that becomes that kind of site. So, thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Mr. McMillan, did you want to go again?
If I could, I'll go back to Wes just a second on the development agreements.
Yes, sir.
These can be a real good form of protection, as far as protecting the people on the aspects. A lot of the phone calls I got, where they were, they were definitely worried about, hey, there's wetland areas out here, we've got real drainage problems, the traffic, and the traffic analysis. These are the type of things, what kind of, to help people understand what's going to be in that development agreement. And of course, we did a pretty large one with SASSO when it was in my district, and just kind of go over a few things that could be in there.
Yeah. Any, anything that, it could be onsite or offsite impacts, predominantly offsite. If some of the, the traffic analysis or drainage analysis come back and say that there might need to be either road improvements at intersections, or road widenings, or turn lanes, or anything like that, or there needs to be some enhancement of drainage laterals, or anything like that, and there's a cost to that. And so, that, that can be negotiated and figured out who's paying for what, and that would be in the developer agreement, and that would be part of the record, and it becomes a, something that has to, they would have to do. And so, those are the protections I think we have, yeah.
The people don't want to see a development come in, and they're, they're in a place where their homes don't flood, and all of a sudden, they've built all these parking lots, and they're getting a runoff and stuff like this. So, we have those protections built in, is what you're telling me.
Yes, sir. And again, you know, it's really a collaborative effort between our, you know, parish engineering, public works, and Alan and their crew with drainage. Now, now that drainage is really on the forefront of everything, and we just have a new drainage ordinance that went into effect in June 1st, so those things will be, you know, we'll be looking at those and paying special attention to them.
Highly scrutinized.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. McMillan. Thank you, Mr. McMurray, oh, excuse me, Mr. Forum.
Thank you. You know, I speak to amendment number eight, I think it is, about the five-year period. What does that process look like, and kind of explain that? I think it's number eight.
Yes, sir. That's correct. Basically, Mr. Forum, in the ordinance, when property is rezoned to industrial, then the ordinance basically says, if there's not a development permit that's obtained within one year, that the property would revert back. Well, this is a unique project. These are unique, these mega sites are very unique in the fact that it takes some time to get them, number one, certified, or even a development to happen there. So, we recognize that. We wanted to give them some latitude to be able to go through those processes and get them done, and hopefully find, you know, projects that would go here. So, that's why we put that five-year limitation, and then on top of that thereafter, they need to be able to show us that they're moving through those processes. That's why we have that language in there. And to give us some updates on where they stand. And then it gives us the authority to grant them extensions of time in order to get some of those things done. So, that's what that language is all about.
So, I think everybody understands that you're never going to get a certification in a year, might not get it in two years. So, that's why it was pushed out from one year out to five years, to give ample time for some progress to take place, whether it be one site, two sites, three sites, whatever it is, and more of a plan put together is my understanding of how this process is going to take place, that you can't, you can't draw a map of what you want it to look like, because you don't exactly know where the certified site's going to be within that site. So, I get that. I really think that the whole key to this site being viable is, like you said, some big company coming in to make an interstate interchange there, or this site's never going to work. There's literally hundreds of acres near Lake Charles and Salford, right on some major highways, there are smaller sites that are already approved, already in much better shape, and I have to drive as far to get to them. So, I think the key to this whole site is, like you said, that big home run coming that's going to put it right next to the interstate interchange that would come eventually. And so, in my heart, I believe that's what makes this a little different than just the average industrial complex that's going to sit out there. So, I think with the standards that we have in place, I wasn't a big fan of the drainage ordinance a while back, but this kind of takes away a little bit of my heartburn about that drainage ordinance being so close to an incorporated area that they go jump in the city to get away from it, so...
So, you're saying we were right?
Yeah, yeah, you were.
I was right.
Come to find out. And so, I think we're, I really feel like we're protected as a parish of this thing just sitting there for some indefinite amount of time with no plan. I would encourage the group to come, come forth with some kind of a plan as soon as they can, and give everybody as much comfort as you possibly can. As you find out information, share it with everybody involved. Because right now, if it weren't for that first checkbox on the LED certification process, we wouldn't be here tonight. And I believe that wholeheartedly, so, I rest.
Thank you. Mr. McMillan.
It may just be a little redundant, but I had some people ask me this question, and they wanted to make sure that we talked about this, but once, if we rezon this to this site, you're not ever going to come back and say, hey, we have a client that's heavy industry, and we want to move heavy industry in here, or we have a client that has hazardous waste, and we want to change our mind, and we won't want to... We're not going to upzone this to any other zoning other than what we're looking at here.
I'd like to hear you say that.
Well, that's certainly not part of any plan. I learned a long time ago, never say never. I can't imagine that occurring.
Well, that's a major concern to some folks.
Well, yeah, but I mean, I don't know how you, I don't know how you predict that. But these owners don't want that. They want this as I-1. What I didn't say earlier, I need to point out, some of you may know this, but most of that property along the east side of this site is owned by these owners. So, it's not like they're coming and plopping all their property out in the middle of somebody else's property for everyone else to worry about. They have a, they have a stake in this site being what we say we want it to be.
Thank you, Ms. President. Thank you, Mr. Latour.
One last question. You brought up earlier that, I guess for that 165 acres put amendment, that it could possibly come back to the planning and zoning and get approved, so that would, it possibly could not come in front of us.
No, that would be if, according to Wes, a railroad can be placed in A-1 if it gets an exception given to it by the Planning and Zoning Board. So, it may be that it doesn't need to be rezoned, it can stay A-1, but with an exception would allow far rail to get around there. Now, you know, we would, we would look for some lead from y'all about how you'd rather that to go.
Yeah, I would much prefer it to come in front of us.
If we've got to go back to somebody, we'd just soon go back to whoever that needs to be, you know?
Yes, sir. I don't know if that could be put in your...
Hang on, I want to say, do y'all have any questions? Mr. President. Mr. Bean.
Just a suggestion, it might be appropriate to allow the speakers now, because I know y'all are trying to answer a lot of questions, but if you can hear their input, it might help guide the answers.
I understand that. Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, I'd much rather it come in front of, back in front of us versus just going in front of Planning and Zoning Board. You know, we're appointed by the people, they expect us to make, I think, a decision of that magnitude. I don't know if they could put that in amendment, too, where it would have to come back at us, not just at the Planning and Zoning.
Mr. Gabb, is that...
I'm sorry, I did not hear the question.
Okay. There's a possibility for the 165 acres that we put in the amendment to take and out, that it could possibly go in front of Planning and Zoning Board to perhaps get the rail put in. Could we put it, put a stipulation where the jury, it has to come back in front of the jury?
All rezonies will eventually come here, but rezonies, initial application of a rezoning, less going to play as only first floor recommendations. This body can't act. I'm sorry.
It's a zone exception.
Rzoning exception, no, unfortunately, you can't. That's state law that sets zoning exceptions.
I just wanted to know if something would have been asked like this.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, yes. So, exceptions variances go to, by releasing a law to play as only.
All right. Thank you. Are you up, Mr. President? Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mr. McMurray. Okay, all that being said, Mr., the applicant had 10 minutes to make their presentation. All the time that they spent speaking after questions did not count as that. So, there will be 10 minutes given to the opposition, and again, questions to you will not count towards your time, so...
And, Mr. President, I was able to speak to, I'm sorry, if you call the first speaker up, while he comes up.
Okay. Mr. Fannets.
And, Mr. President, Mr. Fannets and I, and the others who have wished to speak tonight, have kind of agreed to cede more time to the first two speakers. So, Mr. Fannets will have four minutes, and the remaining speakers will have two minutes each.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening.
Your name and your address for the record, sir.
My name is Chance Fannets. I'm a resident at 4075 Highway 90 West in Vinton. I will say, I will have to adjust my statement, so please bear with me. You know, a lot of discussions have been going on the last hour. My property is near the intersection of Highway 90 and Fobaca Road, directly adjacent and nearly surrounded by the property being requested for rezoning to light industrial. I grew up farming and ranching most of this... I grew up farming and ranching most of this property with my dad and grandfather and had a lifelong dream of raising my own family in this area. I was able to buy my own property in this area and start a family. I have a beautiful wife, a three-year-old daughter, and a one-year-old son and a baby on the way. We just, we're just wrapping up our house plans to build our dream home on this same property, uh, next year. This is not about ag land or keeping this land as agriculture, raising cattle on it. It's not just about that. This is about protecting the quality of life for all the residents in the area. I'm not opposed to economic growth, but there are ways this could be done and still protect the quality of life for these people and, and allow economic development in the area. To add to that, I feel like this, this proposal, this mega site, could be broken down into phases. Uh, it could definitely be scaled down from what it currently is right now. Uh, this would be the largest mega site, I think, in the United States. 12,000 acres. You know, this could be scaled down to 6,000 acres around the interstate corridor. Uh, there's many ways this could be broken up. My largest opposition to this request was the rail access area located north of Highway 90 along Ladue Road. I truly appreciate the amendment that was done a while ago. Uh, it considers those residents in that area, so I, I definitely appreciate the landowners for, uh, be willing to propose that. However, I'm still going to express my concerns that I originally had about it. This rail access location being advertised and requested for rezoning was directly near two residential areas, Ladue Road and Lisa Lane, with many houses surrounding it. This would have been detrimental to my quality of life and many others in the area. Many folks here tonight have reached out, uh, to me to, to speak on their behalf and are, are here in opposition primarily of that rail access, but there's others that are surrounded by this or adjacent to it that are in opposition. I'd just like a quick show of hands for those that are in opposition to this current request. Thank you. I have two challenges for this police jury. Assuming this passes, and I would bring forward a zoning request for my own land to be rezoned to light industrial commercial without a site plan and any idea of what might go there, would you be willing to approve my request? This is not the voting history that is evident based on public record. Why is this any different? You may get an opportunity to prove yourself on that. My second challenge is, how would you feel if potential rail spur could be built only 300 feet away from your doorstep? Could you raise young children in your lifelong residence with rail cars banging at all hours of the night? Put yourself in our shoes. I realize that that has now been addressed with the amendment. And just to add on to that, I'd like to say, is there, or ask, is there any way that we could make that amendment permanent or with a stipulation that it does go back in front of the police jury with public opposition being able to raise their concerns? You know, how do we, how do we make sure that this is not a temporary or a loophole where they could come back around us and add this rail spur in? I don't know the answer to that, but I'd like you to consider it and try to figure out how we can put something in writing that this will not occur to us. If you are unwilling to vote no on this rezoning, I beg you to find it in your hearts. To amend the request, for sure approve the removal of that rail access and consider rezoning or reducing the scale of this request to an area much smaller, but still big enough for a mega site, so that this could add economic development for the area, but start, start small with small phases and keep it away from the residential areas. That's all that I ask. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fannets. Next, we have Ms. Michelle Malone. Hi, Ms. Malone.
Hi.
Just your name and, and your address for the record, please.
My name is Michelle Malone. I live at, um, 5631 Ladue Road. I have lived at this residence for almost 30 years now. My husband and I have built our forever home and raising our two daughters there. Let's see, I lost my train of thought. This is pretty much in our front yard and, um, we do not want to be looking out. Our front door at this mega site project, um, and much less the noise it would be bringing in. I think that there are other spots they can find to do this. And, um, just please reconsider for the safety of our children and other residents close to this mega site, um, please consider rezoning the rail access on Ladue Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Any questions for Ms. Malone? Next speaker, uh, Mr. Maurice Wimberly.
Uh, Maurice Wimberly. I live at 21 Silv- 2192 Silvyn Drive in Salford, Louisiana, 70665. My wife and I bought a four-acre tract in, uh, Cliff Estates, which is in the intersection of, uh, right at the intersection of Gum Island and Shupick Road. We bought that piece of property knowing that that land around us was zoned agricultural and, uh, natural flood plain, so we made our decision, decision to buy there and build our home and raise our family. Uh, the majority of the landowners, like myself and the Carlos and Vinton area, oppose the rezoning of this land. We would like our neighborhoods to remain quiet and for our children to go outside at night and see stars instead of bright lights, heavy traffic and loud noises that a site like this would bring. We would also like to keep the water out of our homes. A development like this would only flood more residents living around the Vinton and Carlos area. It was said, uh, it was said by Mr. McMurray that the landowners are no longer interested in raising cattle, and I'm fine with that. With that being said, the land that they used to run cattle on for years is not zoned for a mega site and should stay that way, just like the land I bought should stay zoned the way it is now. Uh, so I guess the question we have tonight is, are y'all going to vote the way the local landowners want y'all to and deny this rezoning? Or are y'all going to vote the way the landowners want y'all to? I hope y'all decide to vote the way the people want you to. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Marcus Malonsong.
My name is Marcus Malonsong. I live at 5625 Ladue Road. Uh, my wife and I and my two-year-old son, Brooks, just built our forever home that hasn't, haven't even moved into yet. The rail access is directly across the street from my home. Uh, our biggest concern was the noise and traffic and, uh, the safety of my family. Uh, so, with that being said, I would like to thank you for amending the rail access to a Ladue Road property. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malonsong. Drew Malone.
Uh, my name is Drew Malone. I live at 5631 Ladue Road. My main concern was the rail access. Uh, I agree with Chance. I would love to see y'all go back and make it permanent for the safety of my family and every other resident in this area. It's, it's, this site is, is just extremely way too big. It's just, it, the way of life, you know, and there's, if you come down my road late in the evening, you pull over railroad tracks, it's hard enough to get the railroad to trim the trees. If you add another rail or just rail facilities, anything, you know, it's, the sun, the east, when, when it settles down to west, that's right in your eyes. And when you're looking left or right, you, it's hard to see anything, you know? It's, it's a really safety issue. It's, like I said, it's a way of life. And I can't be greedy and then just settle upon this like I thank you for taking it off, you know? But I would love to see it permanent. Uh, as far as the LED, you know, the check mark, uh, like it says, if this site must be zoned otherwise approved for industrial applications, if the site zoned a zoning description and map are required, only sites suitable for industrial use will be considered. Sites adjacent to significant residential development and other uses incompatible with industrial activities will not be, uh, con- considered. And there is multi-families, multi-homes being built in this huge area, you know? It's, and if you know where the rail access is and a majority of Faubacker, except, that, that's considered in a 100-year flood plain. And as it says, in a flood plain on LED, at least 25 continuous acres, buildable acres, must be above a year flood plain. That floods all over the place. You know, so, it's, it's hard to see the check mark for the LED when there's, there's gray area in there. You know, it's, and we talk, he talks about automotive and maybe Walmart. You know, it's, I've, I've seen the economy nowadays, I've seen more Walmarts and automotive industry closing their doors, people losing their jobs. So, I, I, I really don't see that as an example.
Okay.
It's just, and you save jobs and everything. A lot of this land is used for cattle.
Go ahead and just wrap it up.
Yes, sir. A lot of the land is used for cattle and, eh, expect the impact. This is thousands of acres of land of cattle and farming. What impact would that do to the, to the local, uh, sell, selling market, sale barns? It really takes effect. And again, thank you for taking it off, the rail access, but I would really like to see it permanently removed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Philip Appleton.
Mr. President, if we, if I could just make a statement so it kind of clears that up. It's against the state law for us to permanently remove that. Isn't that correct, Mr. Gabb?
Well, you, you've got a whole bunch of issues there. You've got constitutional issues, you've got all kinds of property rights issues.
So, we can't do that even if we want to, from a legal standpoint.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Appleton, uh, name and address for the record.
My name is Philip Appleton. My address is 4356 Highway 90 West. I'm a veterinarian and I live and work in Vinton, Louisiana. My wife and I moved to Vinton in 1999 because it was a rural agricultural community. We have raised our two children here, and when we saved enough money, we bought 178 acres in Vinton. My wife and I raise grass-fed beef. We rotationally graze our cows on grass, do not use hormones or implants. It's healthy food to make healthy people. We are aware of the industrial expansion in Lake Charles, and I am not against industry. But communities need balance. Land, the land in question has been zoned agricultural for a reason, and that reason is to maintain balance. We need agricultural land to feed people. Those green plants and livestock benefit our community and help keep our environment clean. Industrial use of land makes it unfit for future agricultural use due to the processes and waste generated. Unfortunately, when you switch its use, you really can't go back. The rezoning of this agricultural land may increase the monetary value of the land considerably, but it, when it comes to future costs and problems that often don't come to light until many years later, I think we need to look at the future effects of this rezoning. We'll have a knock on the supposed immediate economic benefit that's being touted. I ask you to step back and take a hard, serious look at the question before you tonight as it will have long-lasting and difficult consequences for those that come after us. Balance in our community is paramount. The proposed rezoning will forever disrupt that balance. I thank you for your time and I thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Appleton. Okay, uh, we have one more, uh, Mr. Barry Battone.
Good evening. Barry Battone, 4437 Shupick Road, Carlos, Louisiana. Thank you all, first of all, thank you all for what you do for Calcasieu Parish. We really do appreciate everything that you guys do. Uh, let me begin, uh, by being very clear that I'm personally neither for nor against this mega site or the proposed mega site. I completely understand economic development and community growth are necessities to sustain livelihoods for ourselves and generations to come. As we've witnessed recently, however, the benefits of large projects also come with consequences affecting the quality of life of current residents. It should be easily understood how residents near the proposed mega site have reservations and contention with such a proposal. I'd like to offer the following. Near Currituck County, North Carolina, a 3,000-acre mega site is being developed into a residential and commercial district. The Economic Development Director for that region published an article with the following title, "Five Lessons Learned From Moyac Mega Site That Can Improve Economic, Any Economic Development Project." The number-one lesson learned, according to the article, was this. Involve the community from the start. This thought was explicated by the following points. It doesn't matter if you're building a new highway or a hamburger restaurant. People need to understand the project. People want to contribute to the direction and the personality of the project. At the very least, people want their voices heard. All I'm asking for tonight is for the landowners and/or, or the police jury not only keep the public informed, but engage the people in the process. The quality of life of the people of Calcasieu Parish will be directly and indirectly impacted by the future development of this site. Provided there is proper planning and engagement of the community, these impacts could be minimal and positive for all stakeholders. So, just like you guys are just thinking about that and everything else that everybody said. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Battone. We have one, uh, for Mr. Sid Horn.
Mr. President, I think that's a different item.
Appreciate you. He had one job. So, uh,
I'm done.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. Preface by saying I can't compete with Mr. Scott, with Mr. McBullen, but I have a few things I'd like to say about the issue. I want to go back in history for just a little bit. In the early 1940s, uh, City Service asked to be located in Calcasieu Parish and, uh, uh, the door was open and the rest is history. About 1970, the oil center wanted to locate it in Calcasieu Parish and due to some short-sighted people, it was denied. The project that we're talking about tonight, and I'm very sensitive to the folks who are opposed to this project, but we are a Petrochem Parish here. That is the lifeblood of this parish. What the word I haven't heard here tonight is diversification, and this is the golden opportunity to diversify into other areas other than Petrochem business. I'm going to be very brief, but what I want people to understand is that Calcasieu Parish is no longer an agricultural parish as we once knew it. That era is gone. And so, what we have to do here is to move forward, not at the expense of the residents in the area that we're talking about, but we have to move forward in a positive manner and to take everyone into consideration, whether you're for it or you're against it. I'm for it for the simple reason is, this project is so monumental that you cannot put a price tag on it. There's just no way. And I think, uh, I want to thank the landowners for having the vision to even look at this and, and to, uh, move forward and, uh, I for one, think that this is going to be a good project. We've got EPA in place now, you've got DEQ in place now. It's not like it was back in the 40s when the, everything got polluted. So, the police jury is here to protect you, but at the same time, we have to be economic development and move forward with these kind of projects. With that, Mr. President, I yield back.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Pont. All right, so we had a motion to ex- to accept with the amendment by Mr. Forum and a second by Mr. White. With the amendment, correct. And we've already done the amendment. So, do we need a roll call vote on this? Okay, so we will start. Okay, Mr. Scott.
One question, Mr. Gabb. I know you said we cannot do it.
I know you said we cannot do it, but if the landowners agree to it, to come back to the jury to be heard for their variance, is that okay if they agree to it? I mean, why wouldn't they want to come in front of the body? Is it legal if they agree to it?
The owners can put any stipulations they want on themselves. They can waive any rights they have. But right now, as the law stands, they will have to go to the Planning and Zoning Board, and that, that's where that decision would lie.
But if we make a stipulation that they agree to, which would make it an agreement?
You can.
Now, if they don't want to, that's up to them.
If they don't want to, you can ask.
But we can request it if we want right now, because that seems to be the big topic. So, I mean, if it's that big a deal to people that their lives are going to be affected, and they want to be good neighbors, and they trust us more than a planning and zoning group, then I don't know why we wouldn't at least ask for it if it's a legal request.
You, you could certainly ask the applicants to comment on that, but a permanent restriction on anyone's property would be something that, that not many people would entertain. I certainly wouldn't. But, but to answer your question, you can ask.
Can you call Mr. McMurray up and let me ask him?
Mr. McMurray?
There is no way I'm going to vote to allow us to do something that, that you shouldn't be legally doing. We shouldn't even be discussing this, Mr. Dickens.
But since it's, since it's my floor, since it's my floor right now, we all have one vote, you get that vote. Mr. McMurray, would your group entertain coming back to the police jury instead of the Planning and Zoning Board, or not?
It's an interesting question. I asked y'all earlier, I told you earlier, we would be happy to have some guidance at the appropriate time as to what y'all's preference about that would be, if we have to do something. But we are not going to say tonight that we want to do something that would be permanent here, permanent there. We've got, this, this could be, whatever happens with this site, and whatever happens with the need for rail, if the other site doesn't work, will be what makes or breaks this. And I can tell you that our position, I think, would be, at the time that that decision has to be made, is we want to go where we got the best chance of having that approved. Sorry if that's not what you were looking for, but I mean, that's, we've talked, we've been through a lot of, of time and effort getting to this point today, and if this whole thing hinged on whether we had rail access, what would you do?
So you think you'd have a better chance of it passing at the Planning and Zoning?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, I don't know, I can't predict what that situation might be two years from now. I don't know. I mean, I, you know, I would welcome y'all's input on that as we go forward. If you approve this, that makes me believe that you think this is a good idea for us to move forward. And if something would occur that would cause this to not happen, I would assume you would want to do something about that. So I, I wouldn't have any fear about coming back to the police jury, but I would want Wes's input. I mean, I, you know, and either way, the public has their say at the time that that happens, because it's either going to go to the Planning Commission at a public meeting, or it's going to go to the Planning Commission at a public meeting and the police jury at a public meeting. So I mean, six of one, half a dozen of another, so.
So, and, but they have the appeal right. If it fails in planning and zoning, they can appeal their variance to the police jury, since he doesn't know which way it could go, right?
Well, I, I don't know, maybe this is a matter of semantics, but, but this is, this would not be a variance, is that correct? This would be an exception, and are those?
It's, it's a zoning exception by the, by the Planning and Zoning Board.
Right.
That's it.
That's not a variance.
Mr. Gap, you want to chime in?
I would echo what Wes just said. Variances and exceptions do not come before the police jury. Those are decided by the Planning and Zoning Board with an appeal right to the fourteenth judicial district court.
So let's keep it short. Right now, you'd rather keep it as ordinance says, you don't want to sign up for coming in front of the police jury. I mean, that makes it simple. So you'd rather just stick to what the law is right now?
Not necessarily. If two years from now, we believe that, and we have to come back and do something, which I said before, by giving this up, we've made it known that there could be a point where we have to come back and ask for this, but this was a good faith effort on our part to say, if we don't need that, there's no sense in including it into this zoning. I don't know if that got lost in the shuffle somewhere, but, but that's our position on things. We, I think, I hope I made it clear that we might need, we might need this later.
Oh, absolutely.
But since we think we might not right now, we were fine to, to go ahead and pull that out.
On the bottom, Mr. President, the issue is moot. I don't know why we're even discussing it.
Because I have the floor, if you don't mind, sir.
I don't mind you having the floor. I want to discuss.
Mr. McMurray, I really appreciate your answers, you know, the people that was there concerned, I want to make sure I get to the bottom of it, and that's what we're here for tonight. So, thank you for your time. Mr. President, if you don't mind, thank you.
No, I don't. Too late to mind. Mr. Landry?
Oh, no, I'm good.
Oh, okay.
I'm good now.
I'm done.
I have a good question.
Come on.
Can he ask a question? No, sir. We've already, you have.
I, I do have a comment.
I gotta be at work at nine.
I just wanted, I just wanted to let Mark know for sure that if y'all ever have to come back to us for that rail exception, you can count me on board for sure, whether it goes to the Planning and Zoning Board or the jury, which it's going to go to the Planning and Zoning Board. But anything I can do at that point, I'm on board.
Thank you, Mr. Brain. I don't think we can have any comments from the public anymore. Standby, sir. Mr. Fennets.
I just wanted to ask a quick question. There was some confusion around the exception, and so can we get some clarity around that? So my understanding is with the current zoning request, it can allow a rail spur by exception, but that would only be approved by the Planning and Zoning Committee. Can y'all clarify what we're talking about here?
Mr. Gap, can you clarify that? Or Mr., or Mr. Crane?
Under the ordinance, under A-one agricultural, the use for rail, for railroads is allowed by an exception, a zoning exception, by the Planning and Zoning Board. It has to go to the public hearing, they have to vote on it, but it has to go before them.
So, so the public will get a chance to oppose that at that time?
Yes, it is a public hearing.
Thank you. Mr. Farnham, thank you, Mr. Crane.
Let me, let me clarify something. When you talk about railroad, you're talking about one rail through something as a private. They want access to the other side of the road, I think is what the, what the gist of this is, is that at some point, there'll be a request, if it doesn't work out at the, at the westernmost piece, that it would be moved down to this site to see if it would work. It may not work at either place, but it would be an access rail that would get you to the other side of the highway. It wouldn't, would, would that same exception apply to a switchyard or something of that nature? Or is it a rail accessway?
It says railroads.
Railroads, so does that cover a switchyard?
Covers, covers all of that.
Covers anything that has a railroad on it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farnham. Mr. McMillan?
Thank you. My question was going to be to ask Mr. Fennet if he had a question. So, thank you for covering this. You just say, I pass this. Thank you.
All right, so we have, and let me clarify that, Ms. Kathy, Mr. White made the motion to uphold planning, zoning with, with the amendment, and Mr. Farnham seconded that.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I, I think I said it backwards last time, just want to make sure for the record. All right, we need a roll call vote. Reverse roll call.
On the motion, which is to approve the request as outlined on the agenda, with those stipulations outlined on the agenda, with the amendment that the northern non-contiguous tract that would provide rail access be removed from the site, I mean, the overall acreage.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify. Reverse, Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Scott.
Yes.
Mr. McMillan.
Yes.
Mayo, yes. Mr. Latour.
Yes.
Mr. Landry.
Yes.
Mr. Guillory.
Yes.
Mr. Farnham.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Brain.
Yes.
Mr. Andrew Pont.
Yes.
And Mr. Abshah.
Yes.
The vote was unanimous, motion carried.
I'd like to take a five-minute recess, let the room clear. Like to call back to order the meeting? Thursday, June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. Go back right with item fifteen. Fifteen. Item fifteen, take appropriate action on a request by Savoy Investments LLC to rezone from mixed residential to general commercial. Are we waiting on general commercial to allow commercial development parking lot at one-twenty-five Red Rose Drive in Ward Four? Les had comments on this. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, June nineteenth, two thousand eighteen, and voted unanimously to recommend that the request be granted with the following conditions: One, that the development adhered to the site plan on file with the Division of Planning and Development, provided that the director or designee may authorize adjustments to the site plans in light of technical or engineering considerations discovered during development; Two, that all exterior lighting must be oriented inward toward the development or structures to minimize intrusion onto surrounding properties; Three, that a six-foot wooden privacy fence be installed on the north and west property lines of the development in accordance with Section twenty-six dash fifty of the Parish Code of Ordinances.
Do you have a second, Mr. President?
Excuse me, I'm not finished. With said fencing to be installed prior to final electrical approval of building being constructed on a budding lot, and four, that a runoff management plan, RMP, will be required unless appropriate waiver is granted. I got a motion by Mr. Abshah and seconded by Mr. Guillory. Any discussion?
Yes, we did.
Mr. Farnham?
Is that a dog ear fence?
You're going to be surprised, it's not even about that. You know, this side road is, it has some challenges of, of access into the side road. I'd like to offer an amendment that no access from Red, I think it's Red Rose.
Sir.
To Red Rose Avenue not be granted to this site, that the, the site only comes with approval from DOTD for access from twelve fifty-six.
Got a motion to uphold planning and zoning with this stipulation?
Well, we have a.
I would withdraw my motion.
Yeah. Well, we've got, I'm sorry, we've already got a main motion, we've amended to the main motion.
Just an added stipulation to the list.
I don't believe that's on file.
Say again?
Right now, there's been a motion made to amend the main motion.
Okay, so. Got a motion to amend the motion by?
Correct. And I didn't hear if we had a second.
We had a second by Mr. White.
And so we have to take action on the motion to amend.
Amend, okay.
So if we have discussion on that?
Have any discussion?
I do. If you look at the picture that was up there a minute ago, then you're just saying that this is not going to happen. There is no way that the state's going to grant an additional access on a state highway when there's a street that's right there. That's not going to happen. So basically, just vote against the project. Why do an amendment? Because that's what you're going to do, you're going to kill that project. There's just no way that the state's going to allow that when there's a street right there. We all know that.
And, and, Mr. President, if, I don't know if the applicant's here, the applicant should be given an opportunity to address that, that motion as well, so I apologize for I cut Mr. Landry off.
Mr. Crane?
No problem.
I mean, we can, you can hear from the applicant, but I, I was just going to mention that there is some validity to that, what Mr. Landry's talking about. We don't know at this point what the state is going to do in terms of issuing a driveway permit, they haven't, there's not one, they, they haven't designed it this way. And Tim's not here to, to ask that, but I know that the state does look at other, if there's another road that has, is, you know, that's, that may be easier to access to, they, they may consider that. So I just, you might want to hear from the applicant first, but I just want to indicate that. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I'm just saying.
I think what's confusing is, it's a bigger map anyway, because it, it can, it's confusing me. Anyway, Mr. Who? Mr. Farnham, you waved at me?
I'd just make one statement, I'm not willing, I'm not willing myself to pour all that traffic out on that side street that's not built for that type of traffic, and, and at least not even have a, the conversation with DOTD, whether they'd even allow. It's, it's not fair to all the folks that use that road on a regular basis to have literally dozens and dozens of cars pour out on this thing at any given time of the day. There's, there's a lot of parking rides around this parish that cause significant problems at certain times of the day. It's, they are a good thing, I, I think they're, they're a solution to a lot of our problems, but they're also a problem that exists in a lot of areas, and they got to be located in the right place to work right. And, you know, the bus traffic in and out, the multiple lines of cars that will exist there every day, most likely, they will try to put police force on the road in order to empty that parking lot at everybody else's inconvenience, and, and that's just what makes me opposed to this site.
Little clarification on this, your name and your address for the record.
Clay Savoy, four-nine-two-eight South Prairie Lake Road, Lake Charles, Louisiana. I want to start this off by thanking the Calcasieu Parish for the second time in two nights putting me after the mega site discussion. Y'all could have moved me up right along, but again, thanks for letting me hear all that commentary. With that being said, let me direct this directly to Mr. Farnham, because you're concerned for that parking lot. The piece of property that's directly located to the east of that is already zoned, general commercial, and our plans for that site is to build the corporate headquarters for Versa Integrity Group, who owns three-point-five acres to the southeast of that, along the same road on Highway twelve fifty-six. I can't speak for the Department of Transportation, I can tell you that I've had several meetings with them about this proposed development and our property directly to the southwest, I can point at it if you'd like me to, to show you exactly where it's at. While they were revamping that highway, adding the turning lane, they had discussions with me, we originally had four entrances off of High, off twelve fifty-six onto our property, and they wanted me to reduce it down to two, to make the flow restrictions, or however they did their calculations for that highway, to do that turning lane. So it was strongly advised to me by the Department of Transportation to not have an access onto twelve fifty-six, onto Red Rose. I thought it was a decent compromise, because that piece of property directly abutting up to it where the building's going to be built is already zoned commercial. So this consideration has already been met. Now, your second point about, I believe you called it transportation parking, busing people in and out to different locations, that's not the intended use on the record for this site. This is a commercial office building only. If you pull the plans for the building or the renderings, I actually have them in my pocket, I'd be happy to show them to you, it is a twelve-thousand-square-foot, forty-five office-location building. It, it is not a work site. Our work site is directly to the southwest of that, our operations center, and it's going to stay like that.
So there'd be no interim?
Yes, sir.
No interim use of this whatsoever?
None.
Strictly for the commercial use of that building only?
Absolutely.
With, with no exceptions, so that?
That's correct. This is not a parking ride.
Okay, that's, that's the way I took it.
Oh, no, 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 this is not a parking ride, sir.
This was a temporary parking ride with future development surrounding it.
No. No, sir, we intentionally called it overflow parking, so it wouldn't be confused with that.
Thanks, sir. I'm good. Okay. Want to take the amendment? Want to take the amendment?
Yes, I withdraw my, my motion for an amendment.
We need to go back to, we need to have an original motion.
The original motion was to uphold planning and zoning.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Abshon to uphold the original, uh, fin, uh...
Recommendation.
Recommendation and a second by Mr. Guillory.
With stipulation.
Any discussion?
With stipulation.
With the stipulations?
Correct.
Any objection? Motion carries. Item 16, consideration of adopting a resolution indicating no objection to the proposed project by the Bolton family to construct a new wharf located at 3308 Henderson Bayou Road. We got a motion by Mr. Brain and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Remind everybody, we have meetings on Thursday evenings from 5:30 until, go on the record for saying that. Item 17, consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing Division of Planning and Development to study the feasibility and reclassifying certain tracts of land in Ward 4. Move on 17. Second. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 18, consideration of adopting an ordinance, rescinding ordinance number 7078, which permanently relocated precinct, precinct number 332 North and 332 South to Bell Hall and fixing the permanent location to Burton Hall. So move. Second by, a motion by Howe and a second by Landry. Any second, any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a contract between the police jury and the Educational and Treatment Council Incorporated for the provision of treatment and/or, and other related services for the juvenile drug court treatment program. Got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for one three-quarter ton crew cab pickup truck for use by the county agent. Move on 20. Second. I'd like to let the record show, Ms. Kathy, that I am going to recuse myself from consideration and voting on this item.
Yes, sir.
We've got a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 21, consideration of adopting a resolution accepting Lorraine Park Playground Equipment Project as substantially complete. I got a motion by Mr. Latour, a second by Ms. Mayo. We had discussion.
I just wanted to thank the staff and Mr. Dean for all they've done for Lorraine. I'm sure you got tired of me calling them, but thank you. I appreciate it. I mean, everybody over there's been bragging about it, so thank you again.
Okay, item 22, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolence. I don't know if you got a final vote. We had a motion and a second. Oh, excuse me, you're right. We just discussed. Any objection? Item carries. 22, consideration of adopting a resolution of condolences to be forwarded to the family of the late Henry Bubba Griffin. Move on 22. Second. Got a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. McMillan. Anybody here left to talk? Mr. Landry.
I'm sure, yeah, most everybody here knows Bubba. Bubba's a great guy, come to the meeting sometime, accompany Ms. Elizabeth, and sometimes he was a man of few words. He'd get one in every now and then, but he loved talking about sports. And of course, he was a coach forever down there in South Cameron, and I know the folks in Cameron love him, and we do too. He was, he was really a great guy, a great, great guy. And it was good, you know, you see Elizabeth take care of him over the years as his health failed. But he always, you know, took time to talk to you and was really, always enjoyed the time I got to spend with him. We're going to miss him. I know she will as well.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Mr. McMillan.
Yeah, and to just echo what Chris said, him being a coach in South Cameron, the era that he came up through, he mentored a lot of young men. It was, it was a situation that he was always there. He was a great coach. And when we were here on the police jury through the years, Elizabeth at times would get where she may, would fuss at me, and I could always look at Coach and say, "Coach, help me." And he was always there for me. So I love Coach and I love Elizabeth. She was a great juror, and he's going to be missed in this community. He was truly a, a great man and a mentor to many young men. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
I'm going to be very brief. The one thing I can say about Bubba is I suck at you how to dance, Paul. I don't know about coaching, but he could dance. Not with me, but he did.
Thank you for clarification. Item 23, to adjourn.